We are. Looking to, uh, you know, receive this grant, they say anywhere between six months to eighteen months to get the money. The district will be on the hook for approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the funding. That will be spent over a three-year period, so it's not going to be one hit to the district. Uh, but we'll be able to sort that out. We're looking to pipe, uh, put pipelines in where the fire damage occurred. So that we can reduce erosion issues moving forward.
Right.
Uh, the F mag, we submitted all the paperwork. This is a little bit smaller of a grant. We're going to get reimbursed for. Uh, like overtime work, some hand tools, uh, truck mileage, stuff along those lines from. The actual fire response. We can submit anytime when our employees were working. In the fire zone, uh, for. Uh, reimbursement for the, for our costs for that. So I don't have a number that we're gonna. Receive from that, but it'll be, it's more like a reimbursement than a grant, I guess. The Cal Fire Wildfire. Uh, well. Wildfire Prevention Grant, we have a, a, a fun name for it now. It's Fire Safe of the Divide. So that is the, the grant we're going after. Again, this is the grant for equipment. The deadline is March fifteenth. Right now, we're gathering letters of support. We have most of the grant written. We're still working with the Forest Resource Collaborative. And, uh, we should have that all set to go. So I did receive. A letter of support from, uh, the Regional Water Authority today. And I'm working with some other, uh, local agencies as well as elected officials to receive letters for that. Uh, the NRCS EWP, we are continuing to work with NRCS and, uh, unfortunately due to the weather and, uh. Accessibility issues, we have not had them back into the area to do an assessment, so. We have that one a little bit on hold at the moment. Uh, and then drought funding is, uh, something that we are going to be pursuing. As it comes out into the summertime, we, uh. We have a lot going on with the fire grants and. Right now, we're a little bit overextended, so the, the, the drought funding is, uh, kind of on hold a little bit.
Okay, great.
I will add one more thing, because I started working on it yesterday. That wasn't, it was after this agenda came out, but just an informational. Uh, we're starting to work on an earmark for, uh, the federal government. That would, will be likely asking for a million dollars for a expanding, uh, our water supplier liability. By, uh, installing a tank at the, uh, Sweetwater Treatment Plant. That will help with fire flows, that will help with water supplier liability and, uh, a number of other things. So that's part of our CIP budget for, uh, next year anyhow. But if we can offset some of those costs, we can also, uh, utilize a, a state drought grant. So, uh, in the granting world. You can take a federal grant and a state grant and you can marry them together. You can't take state and state or fed and fed. But if you, uh, you can basically get free money all around. If you take a federal grant and use it as matching funds against a state grant, and that is totally legal. So that's my goal is to take this million dollars and then match it up with two million dollars from the state if we can get it and, uh, we get a free tank.
Great. Yes.
Steven Dow. You mentioned in the beginning of your statement there that, uh. We were turned down for the grant from the FEMA and was it's Ca- California?
We're not turned down. We. Uh. Kind of a long story short, they said we were not eligible, but the county couldn't apply on our behalf, and so we. Uh, spoke with the county and they agreed to, to apply on our behalf, so.
What was your reasoning where we're not eligible?
Uh. Uh, back in twenty eighteen, when the local hazard mitigation plan was being developed. Georgetown was not a participant in that planning process, and unfortunately that made us ineligible. Uh, so moving forward, we will be involved in the, in the update, which is actually happening, starting in the summer. And it will be updated in twenty twenty-four, so we are going to not have that happen in the future, because myself and Adam Brown. Will be participating in that, that planning process. And then what we'll do is, is that plan, once it's completed, we'll come back and get approved by the board, and then we will be eligible in the future.
And the second one is El Dorado County is going to help, try helping us out with the grant now.
El Dorado County is helping us out. They, uh, they really stepped up to the plate. They are taking on a lot of, uh, I wouldn't say liability. But they are taking on the, the responsibility for the grant. They are going to receive the money and then they're going to disseminate it out to us.
And that was three point nine million or three point one?
It's three point nine for the total project, and the way it works is it's a seventy-five percent, uh, cost share. So we owe twenty-five percent of the total, and then they would, uh, the. It's a little bit confusing. It's actually coming from the state, but FEMA is giving, FEMA gives the money to the state, and then the state gives the money to county, and the county gives the money to us. So it's state money technically, uh, that's going to, uh, to the county, and then they're going to help us, but ultimately because of FEMA projects.
Great. Get her down.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Nicholas. What comment? Nicholas, would you mind sharing with the committee and the, and the public there? The effort that you had to make to make this happen and the strings you had to pull? I just wanted the public to know. Know the effort that you're making to make us successful and to get these grants. Do you mind commenting just for a minute?
Sure, yeah. Uh, Friday morning, basically received a phone call or we were on a Zoom call with. Uh. FEMA, Cal OES, and a group called the Hagerty Consulting Group, which works for FEMA. And, uh, their, their, their job is to determine eligibility. Uh, then. The day before, on Thursday, we received a letter. An email about eight o'clock at night saying we were ineligible for this grant, and basically the last two weeks of our, two, two, two months of our work. Was down the drain. They had reached out to the county and the county said that they would not want to take on the grant. They did not want to have the liability of the grant. Uh, so Friday morning, we had a phone call. It was a Zoom call. With myself, Adam Brown, our grant writers, Cal OES. Uh, FEMA and this Hagerty Group, we were basically told why we were ineligible. That's what I just explained to Mr. Dow. Was because of the, the, uh, local hazard mitigation plan process, so. The options that we had were, uh, were going to El Dorado County Water Agency to have them submit for us. And it was determined that they were also ineligible, because they had not also, uh, uh, adopted the local hazard mitigation plan. Our second option was the county, and we had already been told no by the county. And our third option was EID, so. For basically the next twelve hours. I was on the phone and, uh, my wife at one point wanted to throw my cellphone into the pool that we have. Because, uh, it was, uh, reading constantly, so, uh, basically at one point. I had, uh, the county and EID both agreeing that they would submit on our behalf, and. We made the determination of the county being the umbrella over us, instead of just a neighbor. Was the, the right person to have do this. So we, uh, we did have the, uh, CAO's office, uh, sign on to this and, uh, submit on our behalf, so. It was a fight, it was a process, but we got it done and, uh. And we're going to be hopefully better for it when we get the money.
Hey.
Thank you. Great job.
Okay. Six-month review, nope. The item six A, I would like to postpone it until. The next meeting. So for now, just leave the hierarchy the way it stands with the permission of the board, obviously. So I make a motion that we postpone this until the next meeting. Uh, and I'd like to hear from Andy and or Martha about how they feel about that.
We don't have any bylaws that require the first meeting of the calendar year to elect officials or anything like that, do we? I'm fine if there's no other. Rules or policies we're breaking.
I would say as long as you have the motion that you're going to table it until a certain deadline or date, then we should be fine.
I have no objection, Steve. That works. Thank you.
So we'll be postponing till the next meeting. All right, six-month review, financial reports.
So I. In the interest of time, I would be happy to go through this, but I'm going to go through it quite quickly. Uh, this was given at our board meeting, and you do have it in your packet for, uh, for review. But what I did, and with the help of Jessica, our finance, Office of Finance Manager, we went through all the accounts. And we kind of made a determination of which accounts were, uh, close to or needed to be worked on for the rest of the year. So I would like to go to page, um. Um. Revenue summary, I just wanted to, uh, highlight, uh. As of December thirty-first, we had not received the property tax revenue, so that's, that's just a highlight that you may notice that. Is it red there? So anything in red is kind of a question that, hey, you know, what is this? Why, why is this kind of off? And so that's something, and then, um, above that, the surcharge that actually was paid to us, unfortunately, when this report was given. It's in a different account, and so we had to move it and we merged it and it's all taken care of now. Correct?
Yeah.
Did want to ask about irrigation sales, though, because that's not property tax generated, right? That's monthly fee-based. And we should be, given that the season is. April through October, we should have received more than half of the annual revenue. Should we not have?
It, it does not kind of fall in that category. It, we, we, it's a, it's a little bit of a hu- a convoluted way of doing it, but. It does not fall half and half. It does fall, uh, more within the end of the fiscal year or the post of the beginning of the fiscal year.
There's more fees in the beginning of, in spring, because that's the beginning of irrigation, so. We usually get forty percent during July, August and September. And then May, June, so May and June will have more money coming in.
So do you have a projection for year end? Or back?
Can you all hear us again? Okay, uh, so the projection is.
Can hear you now, yes.
The, I, the projection is right around four hundred and fifty thousand, I think, in terms of the five sixty was a little high. And we still have some, uh, uh, inches available in certain, uh, runs, so it's not as high as the five sixty. But I can get you a more firm number.
We're down twenty-two inches from last.
Can we get a number of what, what you think it's going to be?
About thirty-six thousand dollars.
I don't think we're going to make a five.
Scale level is fine for my question. Yeah, I just, that sixteen percent was a little shocking. Not understanding how the yearly cycle.
For me as well, that's why I flagged it on there. Uh, going to the next, uh, uh, page, the pie chart is, uh, operating expenses. Uh, I just wanted to flag two things here. Uh, obviously, the biggest things that we have to contend with are. Uh, salaries and, uh, retirement expenses, so. Those are the two big pies on opposite sides, so just to keep, uh, you know, the, the committee aware that when we budget. These are, these are our big, uh, big pots, the. We have to kind of keep our eye on it, so we are definitely keeping an eye on them, and, uh, we will make sure that we have that as a, uh. As we move forward. Um. Moving into fifty-one hundred. Uh, just some things that I wanted to go over. You'll see in the notes, um, the overtime. That's a, that's what was, as a result of the mosquito fire, we had a lot of extra time and effort put into that. We're going to be, uh. Requesting some reimbursement for that. We already were reimbursed for a portion of that because of the, uh, exigency grant that we received from. NRCS, that was basically a emergency to cover the flu, and that was re- reimbursed about thirty thousand dollars, so. You know, we, uh. Probably had about ten thousand in labor in that grant, just ten thousand, so. You can see that that number would, uh, definitely come down. Uh, the overall that I want to point out, oh, actually, I want to point out one more thing, so operating fuel. Uh, again, that was, we're driving a lot more. We had, uh, uh, more ups and downs of the, of the mountain to, to get to our, our, uh. Our work area, and also the LAO's office for the state of California has identified a forty-five percent increase in fuel sales over, from this year over last year. So that is definitely something that we need to contend with, unfortunately, um. You're going to hear it a few times, but, uh, you know, inflation is definitely going to be something that affects our costs. We're seeing it. Um, on, on a number of different, uh, areas. So if you go to the bottom line number there, the overall, we're about sixty-six percent of our budget. Uh, a majority of that is, uh, has been reimbursed to us in the amount of about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. So we're not, we're not really in a, in a dire straits. We are going to keep an eye on this. But a lot of the red you see there is, uh, is as a result of the fire, so we hope to get even more money back, um, through other, uh, funding mechanisms.
Hey Nick, what about the purse expenses?
So the.
What? Yeah.
The UAL.
Uh-huh, and the, uh, retirement expense as well.
Yeah, so the purse UAL, that's our unfunded liability, and that's a one-time payment that we make to, uh, hers in the beginning of the, of the fiscal year. So because it's at ninety-seven percent, that's actually perfect. We're right on, right on track. Uh, the retirement expenses, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure why we're at sixty-five percent for that one. We're trying to do, um, some calculations for the. Uh, uh, salaries and, and retirement expenses. Um, the best I could probably say is that when PERS, uh, sends in their, uh. Uh. There is a report we get, we got it after the budget was already formed, so I'm hoping to work with them to get those numbers sooner this year. You'll see that UAL number is going to be basically red for each department, because it's a payment that we make in July. So ninety-seven percent is, is actually perfect, and I know that's kind of weird. Uh, moving to fifty-two hundred, uh, again, I'd like to just kind of note the part-time wages is something that we have, uh. Uh, we had a, uh, person. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, we had a person who was. Um. Injured and was out on disability for a while, so we had a. Uh, part-time employee, uh, that came to work with us for a little while, so that's why that was unanticipated. Uh, we're going to work on making sure that that's anticipated, uh, a little bit better, so we have an emergency fund for stuff like that. Again, overtime, so some of this overtime is also, uh, mosquito fire related. Um, we also have had a, a few extra call-outs that we normally have due to the weather. Uh, again, although the UAL number again, Martha, is, is again, you see that there is ninety-seven percent, so that's something else we flagged, um. Again, uh, fuel, that's another one, again, eighty-three percent, so. And then the last one is, uh, staff development, so I just wanted to make sure that, uh. You guys see that, uh, for staff development, we're working on looking at those numbers and looking to determine how much staff development we need. There has been a little bit more this year due to the implementation of Cartograph. As well as we did have a couple of employees get some additional certifications for their positions. Uh, moving to fifty-three hundred, the ones I'll note here is again overtime. Overtime is, uh, we had the treatment plants running extra during the fire, so that was definitely something that we accounted for. Um, this one, the first UAL is actually high, and, uh, we're not a hundred percent sure how this number got budgeted is so incorrectly, so we're. Definitely working with PERS on this to make sure that we don't have this in the future. Um, the office supplies, we're going to be moving that into the fifty-six hundred, so it can be more easily tracked. So whenever we have office supplies after that will be. And then the one big one here on the bottom is utilities, and I'd just like to, to note that, uh. On the, uh, two pages later, it says, uh, P G D increased our kilowatt cost from ten cents per kilowatt. To nineteen cents per kilowatt. That was after the, the, uh. Uh, budget was created and announced to about a forty-seven percent increase in like, in utility costs. So, and again, moving back, you know, this is right on track, right at fifty percent. So moving quickly to fifty-four hundred. Uh, again, overtime, so this was, um, something else that. We are going to look at these overtime numbers to make sure that we have enough there. We may increase the budget. Um, but hopefully don't have to use it, so that's, that may be something that we do to make sure that we stay on track, is to just offer a little bit of, uh, uh. We, uh, we need to see on, on how much, uh, overtime we have and we use. Uh. Vehicle maintenance, so. That's a big one. Do have, um, some vehicle maintenance issues that, uh, as things get older, we've had, uh, some equipment in the shop. One of this, one of the pieces of equipment was our Vector trailer. That was in the shop and, um, we actually put it in the shop. We had it fixed. We got it back out and it was, and it broke again. It was. Not any kind of operator error, just. That it's, uh, natural, uh, things that break. We had a pump go out, we had pump seals go out, stuff along those lines, um. Part of the cost for. Um. Materials other, you'll notice that materials other is, is very high. That was actually a rental of a new Vector trailer, so that's why we would call that out. So once it was in the shop, we had to have one. These are required when we do any kind of call-out work for leaks. It's utilized to, uh, keep the, uh. So when you do a leak in a distribution system, you can't turn the water off. You, you have to keep the water flowing. So you keep the water flowing and you use this back to your trailer to suck out the water in the hole to make sure that the guys can keep working dry. Uh, if you shut the water off, then you have to basically, uh, do a boil water notice, and we don't ever want to do that, so that's why this is a, it's an imperative piece of equipment that we have, um, always.
Nick.
Yes.
May I ask a question? Um, it looks like in the fifty-three hundred under government. Regulation fees. It's like we budgeted quite a bit, but used up very little. And then in the fifty-four hundred, it's the opposite.
Yeah, so we actually noticed the same thing that you noticed, and. Um, so we're going to be moving the funding in the future from fifty-three hundred to fifty-four hundred. Because when it was budgeted, this is where, uh, we do like our coronation and our back tea analysis, so, uh. The best I can say a little before my time starting here is that. They were assuming that some of this was going to get charged to water treatment, and it's all being charged to, uh, treatment and distribution. So thank, thank you for that. That's absolutely a perfect observation. Uh, Mr. Murray, who's the question from the audience?
Yes.
Hey Nick, um. You said you had the rent of, uh, eve- of that. Trailer.
Correct.
Now, there's special companies that rent those in doubt, or.
I'm so glad.
Are there special companies that rent those out, or is it like US Reynolds and?
You know, Steve, I'm not sure. I would have to.
I, I'm under fourteen years in a rental company. I, I never called one or anything like that.
I. I would imagine that they, that some sort of a specialty company, I would have to get back to you. I could totally tell you who you rented it from. I just don't have the, the name off the top of my head. Sorry.
Yeah. Sounds like a specialty.
Yes, yes. There, the, the trailers alone cost about thirty to forty thousand dollars. Okay, uh. So fifty-four hundred. And again, I'll just note the staff development there. You'll see that, that's high, and again, that was the Cartograph training. So something we're going to be working forward and, uh, making sure that we. Are training our employees. We're going to be helping them, you know, to make sure that they can. Be a, a better asset for the community, but also, you know, fiscally conservative in how we do that, so. Uh, fifty-five hundred, so, uh. Fifty-five hundred is, is kind of a weird account. Um, we are going to take this account and merge it with the fifty-six hundred account. Uh, basically what fifty-five hundred does is it's the, uh. The girls in the front, that would be the salaries, and then all the, all that stuff, and then. Everything below it is. Already things that really are part of the administration of the district, so this is just kind of a natural, we're going to. Move forward and deleting this one. We're going to take all these numbers and we're going to add them to what we have in fifty-six hundred moving forward, and really, there's not a lot here to. To note, the only thing I would note, Tate, is the, uh, office supplies, um, and, and again. It's because there was no budget here for office supplies, so we were charging, uh, things like. Newsletters and, uh, billing, brochures. And all the things that are bill- being billed as customer service, which would, was budgeted for under administration, so. Uh, moving forward, we're going to convert that over. Okay, so for, uh, fifty-six hundred, the first thing that you'll notice is, uh, is the part-time wages. And so I'm not a hundred percent sure why, uh, something wasn't budgeted there. There was already a part-time employee on staff when, uh, the budget was created, so. There, there was a little bit of an oversight there, um. Excuse me. And then, uh, for the salaries, uh. There was a new position, a new general manager hired and a new contract, so a portion of that percentage could be attributed to. Uh, the, the wage being slightly higher than was originally budgeted for. Uh, the automobile allowance, that is part of the general manager's contract. Was not part of, it was not budgeted for, it was not part of another contract beforehand. Uh, retiree benefit. The best I can say is that's also, uh, high because of the new general manager's contract. Uh. Kind of to not belabor, they continue to say that, is, uh, moving to materials and supplies. We have, uh. Basically, this is. Like our. That's the one we, we put in your computers and. Uh.
Anything that's, it's, uh, non-consumables.
Yes, sir, they're non-consumable, that's a good reason. So, you know, we are. A little high, but I think we're going to actually come in, because we're going to keep a, a close eye on that one and not, uh, not continue. You'll notice the office supplies here is, uh, is, is more on track, so. Um, we should be able to absorb the fifty-five hundred and not increase this budget. Um. And then, uh, moving to the next page. Uh, so we did not, uh, we have a, we have an admin vehicle. It's a, uh. A pickup truck that, that, uh, the operations manager utilizes. And that was not accounted for in the budget, so we have fuel that was never budgeted for. We have, uh, building maintenance. That was a HVAC issue that we had also. Our pest control service, and there was one other one you told me.
Um, weekly cleaning.
Weekly cleaning services, so those were never budgeted for under building maintenance, and so that's why this number, uh, is there with a, with no, uh.
I'm going to be moving all of those into professional services. So that'll come off.
Yeah, I just, just their flags, so I just wanted, I wanted to just make sure that everyone knows why they're flagging. Uh, the general liability insurance came back ten percent higher than, uh, it did last year, so. That's why that number shows, uh, higher. That comes from Aqua. We basically get, it's Aqua J K. We get that number in June. So this budget was a, a, approved. We got the number right after, and, and it was already, uh, unfortunately, a little low. Uh, staff development, so this is for, uh. Jessica and Adam and Alexis's, they've done some, uh, trainings that they've had, as well as. Uh, Stephanie has an HR training. So the only training that was budgeted for was Stephanie's. Uh, the other trainings have been required of their positions, so we had to pay for them, and unfortunately. Uh, we're a little over budget on that, so we're going to be looking at that in the future. Uh, the travel, that was, uh. I know that was, I, I went to the Aqua Conference in Palm Springs. That was part of that. That was also.
All of the board reimbursements get put there, too.
And, and then all the board reimbursements as well, so that's something that we're going to be working on. Member regulation fees, this was the, um, Laughco MSR that, uh. Was completed and we had to pay for. That's a mu- a municipal service review that was not anticipated. And then the last thing is. Uh, miscellaneous expenses, and that is. Uh, we've had some newspaper postings for ordinances. That we did not anticipate, and that's where those costs are coming in. For the memberships, those are usually one-time membership fees, so that number is another, uh, we make large bulk payments in July. Uh, so this one, I would just kind of like to highlight the, uh, the, the number there, the seventy-three percent. This is definitely something that is. Needs to be paid attention to. Uh, we do have, um, some areas where. We know that this isn't going to be going higher, but we do as a staff need to keep our close eye on this budget to make sure that it stays within reason. We also have had a few additional services that we, uh. Started that we didn't originally budget for, such as a, a grant writer, engineering services, um. Well, anything else?
Nick, what's the elections money? The nine thousand there? What's that for?
Yeah, so we have to pay for an election. We have to pay a portion of, for the election. Uh, we haven't been told yet by the county.
Oh, I see, okay. Usually about nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we, we, I think we could build a couple months after they, they certify it.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so moving forward, um, to where it says overall budget to actuals. The, uh, there's two charts, there's one that's a graph, and there's one that's a, a, a spreadsheet. I just, I highlighted that, uh, you know, three of the accounts are looking really good. They're in the green, they're in fifty percent. There's the, the one account does that sixty-six percent. That's the one that had overtime issues. It has had some fire-related expenditures. Um, then there's one that's sixty, that would be fifty-four hundred. Uh, again, we've had some extra costs. We've had some rental equipment that we've utilized. Uh, and then the last one is fifty-six hundred, that would be the seventy-three percent. Um, overall, if we take all of. Um overall, if we take all of the numbers, we're at fifty nine percent. So it's a little high. But then we have some of those costs that are that are July only costs. We have some of those other costs that we. Are have anticipated and we're getting reimbursed for. So um the fifty nine. Percent it's it's a little concerning because it's high, but I think that we can uh maintain and move forward. I believe you have a question from the public.
From Mitch. Mitch?
Yes.
Did you have a question?
Yes, can do you have an answer for the difference in your budget review and the Tyler program? That I brought up at the board meeting. It's off two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you right here. We are addressing that. You put in a public information request if I.
No, I requested. You told me that it your budget review went through the end of December. And the Tyler program went to the end of December and yours was over two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars.
Correct, I I. I do remember you you brought that up. So I I don't have an answer for you. Uh moving forward, I will we will definitely look into that and make sure that. Um we're on it. This is just an informational item that we gave to the board. So I. I was just giving it to the finance committee as well.
Okay, but what is your as of date on your budget review?
This review was the Tyler report was pulled from July first through December twenty, December thirty first.
Okay, but that didn't match what you presented at the board meeting. That's what I'm bringing up and you're not giving the finance committee. The proper information. I'm just stating it.
Yes, there is a discrepancy between. One of the reports and we're not nervous and sure why. We're we're trying to determine why there's a discrepancy and Shuri did point it out to us. So yes, I will. Definitely say that she uh she pointed this out. So it's something we're trying to determine as to.
So I just wanted to mention one thing is um. Cause Shuri did give me a piece of paper with information on it. But I had a two-hour meeting with L S L today and. Adam and I are working on. There's a way that that the pooled cash speaks to the different funds. So. Adam Cohen had set up these eight thousand accounts. In the water fund that are connected and and would have been pulling. G L from the water funds through the pooled cash. But they were supposed to be tied to the C I P. They were all C I P projects. So what he was trying to do was create. Different project names so that when we did work. We could code it to a project. It would be pulling funds from C I P. But instead, he he had created one hundred dash eight thousand accounts. So it was. It would have. We haven't used them, so it's not doing anything. But he did allocate funds to those accounts. So it is like, even though it's not real money, it's virtual. It is messing with the reporting. And so those accounts need to be looked at very carefully. Deleted and making sure that all of that. Those funds that were allocated to those different accounts. Have been moved back into and connected thoroughly to the C I P. So they have nothing to do with water because we do the annual fund transfer at the end of the year. That's what fills up the C I P. So that was about two hundred thousand dollars. That would make perfect sense, but I cannot verify at this time if that's exactly where the discrepancy is coming from. And then if you look on the overall budget to actual slide, which I believe is page thirty, um. The one hundred dash fifty six oh one is a phantom account and that amount that's in there, the eighty thousand dollars is already in zone. And allocated to zone. So this just needs to be deleted. I don't feel comfortable deleting anything out of Tyler. So I've asked the C A Ps who are almost experts in the encode system to look into that. And then the one hundred dash sixty one hundred, we don't have a zone water account. So that's actually supposed to be two hundred dash sixty one hundred and it's the same. Effect. It's like a phantom account. Those both need to be deleted, but we need to make sure that nothing's tied to those accounts before that happens. So there's just like danglers came now.
So we'll.
We're in the process of fixing that.
And we'll get a notification when it's good.
Yes.
Perfect. And any anticipation as to when we think it'll be good?
No, because they're settling up like fifteen different companies you're in. Out audits right now.
Okay.
So I get one hour a week with them today and it being two.
Do they take them sequentially, do this one and then move to that one? Or are they doing them all simultaneously? Who knows? Well, I just meant, you know, if they're doing it sequentially, then we can say, okay, that's been reduced by X. Okay, now it's been reduced by Y. Okay, now.
I think every company they work for has different fires to put out. So it's all priority based. This is not priority based because it's not gonna affect. Next year's audit yet. So they have time to clean it up. I understand that it puts pressure on us and it puts pressure on the people who have want answers to their questions. But it's not really a priority for them because they're trying to keep people. From having findings in their own audits and this is next year's audits problem. So they will clean it up and they will fix it, but it'll take a little time.
We will come back to the.
Yeah, we'll definitely give you an update.
Um just wanted to highlight some savings that we've determined for the district. We are implementing new phones. Once the Comcast internet goes in, which we've got a date of. We've been told the twenty seventh of February or or somewhere around there. Uh so we've been kind of told and told and told and told. Uh we're hoping that it doesn't make the year mark at April, but you never can tell. So once we do that, we we've signed this contract. We're not paying any uh anything on it yet. We've got a contract with Verizon to do. Uh a reduced cost for our phones and the savings we're gonna see is approximately forty four thousand dollars for the year. Uh billing, we're we went to a new billing company. Um that's gonna save us approximately thirteen thousand dollars per year and then.
We just got our first bill from them. And it was twenty five hundred dollars for the January billing, which is about three thousand less than the other billing company we're using.
So it actually might be more than thirteen thousand. I uh tried to calculate some of these numbers based on an average. So maybe my average was low and and that that would be fantastic. And then. The last one is the newsletters and and those newsletters. We're gonna save about eighteen thousand dollars per year. Um we're not gonna set up the newsletters individually. We're gonna put them as a billing cert. So that will be uh incorporated with everybody's bills. So anybody who's a customer will receive the newsletter. Um so that's fantastic. Uh moving to zone, uh sixty one hundred. We have just a few things. That are uh of note. We have salaries that uh. We're to try to determine why uh we think that some of uh Alexis's salary might be being. Put here, but it wasn't originally budgeted. So we're trying to figure out where the discrepancy is there. Overtime, we had a couple leaks in the system down there and Brian had to uh work on. Uh making sure that those didn't become barely leaks. And this was as a result of, excuse me, the the uh weather that we've been having the over the rains and and. Uh the system is is just can't handle the big rains because it's it it. Takes all that into the system as well. Um. A general liability insurance wasn't budgeted for, so that would be definitely something we included for next year. And then government regulation fees. These are as a result of those leaks, those uh. When the system leaks, we have to do additional testing requirements. Clearly, we are. Under budgeted in this area, so we need to make sure that we keep an eye on how we do that in the future. Um. Moving to the capital improvement plan budget. So uh. Uh pump station retrofit. Um so we did. Shuri, I'm gonna mute you. You have a little bit of vibration.
I did that. I'm sorry. I just I touched it and put her hand down and.
Totally fine. Totally fine. We will not mute you, Shuri. I apologize. Um. Uh. Pump station retrofit. So some of this is either spent or anticipated to be spent. We've done a little bit of retrofit to the pump station and twenty five thousand dollars. Um the the tank, I mentioned that in our my grant report. So that is a three million dollar tank. That we have budgeted for F Y twenty five, twenty six. This is for fire flows, um water supply reliability. Um we're gonna attempt to have a uh earmark allocation for this, so hopefully that won't be as big of a burden on the district. A tunnel inspection lining. We are working with. The tunnel inspector right now. Um we are not sure when the availability for them to do this is. So. Uh again, with the weather and stuff, we have. They may or may not be able to do it this year because once the weather clears, we're gonna have irrigation season shortly thereafter and they cannot. Uh you do this work with irrigation season ongoing. So we're hoping that we can get it done, but there is no guarantees. Uh infrastructure replacement. This is uh building improvements. Um so we're gonna start with some preliminary work on this. That would be the seventy five thousand dollars. Uh that would probably be uh likely design costs. And permitting and the things that we need to start that process. Um the anticipation is to move the. South wall. What wall is that? South? Uh where am I at here?
Northwest.
That wall.
Yes, well.
The wall behind Mr. Miller.
Called the west wall.
Uh backwards and we are. Yes, I was right. All right, one for me. So uh uh we're gonna move that wall out to expand the uh uh.
Boardroom.
Boardroom. We had a comment about restrooms. So part of the plan is to install a restroom. Uh we are going to add an office for the new executive assistant and uh. Not necessarily an office, but a space for the new executive assistant. Then uh we would like to put in. A electric gate to make sure that our equipment stays safe during the day and and night. Um. Angel camp tape recoding that is. Uh anticipated for next year. Safety walkways. These are uh unfortunately with the fire, we were gonna actually start building these right while the fire happened because that was right after. Um. This this season. Instead of building safety walkways, we act we're cleaning up the fire. So we're gonna try to get a few of those done, but. Uh we don't anticipate being able to do them all. Uh treated water line replacement. So we are doing this now. We actually just ordered the parts and uh uh. Equipment we need for the chimney flat line replacement. We don't anticipate much more funding than than the hundred and fifty thousand. Uh regulating valves. So we already spent about fifteen thousand, excuse me, fifty thousand dollars. We anticipate about fifteen thousand more. Uh North Park American River. This is just an ongoing uh project that we will, if we do utilize, we would pursue grant funds for. Uh meter replacements. So this part, the meter project is done. There's a few hangers on, but we're doing those in-house and we're gonna rotate this. Into the general budget. As a as a debt service and it will not appear on the C I P moving forward. The what will appear is. You'll see later on is the A M I infrastructure. Uh an annual canal lining and uh improvements. So again, this was put on hold because of the fire. But what we did actually do is received an eighty thousand dollar grant uh which our cost is two forty. So it will pay for uh over the next two years. Um our plans for doing canal improvements. So we're gonna have basically about. A third of our our outlay for the next two years paid for by the Bureau of Reclamation. And uh we're gonna try to get that done this year, some of it, but I again, I don't anticipate it with the timing and everything else that we are going on. Okay, development of an alternative water source. This is uh something that we are pursuing. Laughco recommended us to have uh some sort of alternative water source. This will have to be grant funded or a bond funded. That is going to be a rather expensive uh process. Uh paving contractor. So we uh we were originally put an R F P, but we are uh utilizing a. I'm gonna say this wrong. It's a procurement. Um I'm so sorry. It's a general procurement agreement with um. Other water districts that we can put out our scope of services. More quickly and and receive a quote back as opposed to putting an R F P out for every time we want to do paving work. Or having an hot ball paver that may or may not be available when we we need them. We can put out our perspective work. We can say we have X number of miles or X number of feet or X number of square feet of of. Sorry about that again. So X number of square feet that need to be paved and then we will have companies that will submit us a quote. Utilizing this agreement. And so that's that's what we're gonna anticipate doing. So we do have a little bit of work that we're gonna do this year, but that's what we're gonna try to utilize moving forward. Uh the water system condition assessment, that's the castle study. So that is something that we are working on having uh an update at the next. Board meeting. Uh castle study is a water supply reliability assessment that we're hoping to have done in May or June. Uh so we're not gonna be replacing any air release valves this year uh just due to timing. Asset management program. So this is the uh cartograph program that Adam has been implementing. We're also now that this is an ongoing uh cost, we're gonna rotate that out of the general, but rotate that into. Budget as well as a professional service. Uh this nation upgrade, this is for zone. Um. There was a question about this. At the last board meeting. So this will will come. Um. We are starting the environmental process for this. Uh don't anticipate the whole. Piece of this getting done this year, but we'll be attempting to get as much of it done as we can. Uh master meters. So we've done about half of the master meters and unfortunately they're back ordered five months. So if we do the math, moving out five months, that puts us past the end of this fiscal year and into next fiscal year. A M I metering infrastructure. So. We are doing a test this uh this month. In the A L T area for the automated meter infrastructure. This would be automatic meter reading. We wouldn't have to have anybody driving around. They would just transmit the data to us directly. Uh but to do the entire district because of the terrain, it is quite expensive. So uh we are budgeting for that moving forward. Uh we will also be pursuing grant funds because that is a drop project that we can typically get grant funds for. So the solar on Walton and Sweetwater. Uh again, we're gonna try to pursue some grant funds. I know that there is a bunch of uh pages that are happening to the net metering program. So. Um we may or may not be able to realize these costs. I am anticipating it. They or may not be in the district's best interest moving forward, but that's just me talking today. So I have to do a bit more research on the solar. Uh water wheels for the ditch. So these are um power generating water wheels that are um basically like the old style paddle wheels that you saw that would grind. You know, grind flour. Um what they do is they actually go in and out of the water as the water level rises. So we are. The cost for thirty thousand dollars actually probably won't be realized. It's gonna be more around three thousand to four thousand dollars. We are working with a company that has these and they wanna put as many of them as we can put in and they're going to help us with a grant from. The state of California that's already has money earmarked. These are uh a a um. Uh sorry, was uh was it a real one or a new technology? So they're trying to uh vet them. And we're getting one at at a very reduced cost and we're actually. Our cost right now is putting in con- a concrete pad. So that they can have access to our waterway and they can test them out. So. I think these they they may be better than solar and then. We can actually hook once we have these in the water. If we have access or a space, we can have solar to them as well. Um. The partial flumes, these are um. Um. They're uh. Like stream gauges that we're gonna try to put to make sure that we can determine how much water is flowing through the canals. So we are gonna try to get those in before the irrigation season. And the last one is the pressure relief valves that was brought up. At uh two board meetings ago. Unfortunately, this this cost came in uh fifty thousand dollars. Higher than we originally anticipated. So that's something that we did get board approval for. And uh it's moving forward. We have that that uh the part on order and will be installed. Guessing. The next thirty to sixty days. Quickly, uh updates on the salary survey. Uh we're doing a general salary survey that's very similar to the two thousand eleven study. The data points that we're looking at are maximum base salary, deferred compensation, max employer co- uh contributions to primary insurance. That would be health, dental, vision. Uh pensions. Uh so we have two different pensions here. We have Peppera and we have Classic. So we have only a few classic. So we have only a few classic employees left, and so we're gonna be comparing most of those based on Peppera. And then since we are a social security agency, how those costs affect those uh retiree benefits. Uh, salary survey, uh, classes, you'll see the the notice of classes that we have here. Um, I have actually identified one additional um job that I would like them to do some research on, it's a part time. Uh, public information uh position, I don't know if it's gonna fly, but it's something that we are going to have them and uh. Look at and work on to see if it's something that we could uh have here as well. And then finally.
Nick, how often do they do a salary survey, is this?
The last. Last one we've done in two thousand eleven. Uh, so that's, I I would imagine we will anticipate doing one every, I would say ten years or so, five to ten years.
And then you do like a cola or something to bring salaries up or?
Yes, so we have a uh a merit pool that we do here, and we also have. Uh. How how do they use, is it a cola, do we have a cola or just a merit pool?
We have a cola in July.
So every July, yeah. Um, okay, so so the uh the survey agencies, you'll you'll notice that there's two different ones, um. We have one agency that was removed because they don't have a a great staff. To compare to anywhere, that would be Grizzly Flat, unfortunately, they experienced the the fire in Aldor Fire. Uh, and so we removed them and replaced it with Calaveras County. Which is just our neighbor to the south, and then um for the wastewater positions, because it's a specialty wastewater, it's not like somebody running a wastewater treatment plant. We had to kind of find the right uh comparator agencies, so we've identified three comparator agencies to compare those a couple wastewater position, we have. The Water Resource Manager who oversees that position as well as the operator. And so that's the uh the update on the six month budget review, and it was kind of quick and fast, but I hope everybody was able to understand.
Yes.
Nick, um, what is the status on the two pumps that need to be replaced down at the Sweetwater treatment plant?
So the pumps don't need to be replaced, that's, we're putting in a uh a special veil. That closes slower and and will regulate those flows. We are going to be putting in a V F D controller. That we need to put in, so if the pump is already a V F D pump, but the controller that operates is not a V F D uh controller. So that's something we're gonna anticipate putting in the C I P, I don't I don't know when we're gonna get that upgrade done, but with this new. Uh, veil, if we can actually extend out further than we need, that if we didn't have it. So it's either with one or the other, they they, we should have bolt, but one or the other was kind of the path forward right now.
It sounds like we'll be saving money.
Valve. Uh, right now, yes, but we eventually we should put in the controller because it will be much more efficient energy wise. And it'll save, we'll still save money, there are O I and it won't be, will be that far.
Okay, anything further on that? Okay. Did you want to go back to number five B?
Uh, yeah, that'll be part of this presentation.
Okay.
Yeah. So uh, would you like me to start? Okay, uh, so we did, we did hire a investment firm. The uh Optimum Investment Partners gave a presentation to the board at the last board meeting, I will quickly go through their presentation. I'm definitely not gonna be as smart as them and uh and all the stuff they have in this in this uh package, but they are a they're incredibly uh. Smart and and great team to work with, they they specialize in small districts, so that's one of the reasons why we chose them. They uh they definitely came in with a lot to offer to the district. But you'll see, we have to do the the investment policy, we started with uh the basic investment policy. Uh, that the board had previous, we updated it with some new language, and then they uh helped us finalize that investment policy. Uh. Basically, public agencies have a set amount of investing requirements that they can use and can do. They cannot just invest in the stock market and and have high risk stocks. They have to have special accounts that they they invest in, and so they are helping us to determine which of those would be the best to invest in. You'll notice the next one, we go permitted investments, that's what I was just talking about. Uh, basically, you'll you'll notice all of the ones that are uh government backed, so these are all F P I C backed and and. Uh, insured, so that we don't lose any of the district's uh funds. And then I kind of want to go to. The last page where there's a graph. And it said initial, uh, did, excuse me, initial portfolio analysis. I guess this would be the big takeaway from the presentation that we received. Uh, right now, we have approximately, it's about ten billion dollars, these these numbers that are. We've looked at everything, it's right around ten million dollars that we have to invest. It's been in life since two thousand eighteen, just sitting there at about two point two nine percent. And what we're basically losing is, if you'll notice, the the pool, it's uh up to. Uh, almost five percent, and some of the, some of the accounts right now are actually above five percent. So we're losing about half of the money that we could be gathering by this investment, so. The update on this is, I have to go to a Wells Fargo. To prove to them who I am, that I'm the general manager here, I have to show them I D. I have to basically sign on because that's who does our life investing now, and once I get to a Wells Fargo and have five minutes, we should be able to start investing for real. Uh, and so that's my quick, uh, uh.
There's one in cool, by the way.
The it's true, it's, I was, I I'm over that way though, but maybe I'll drive to cool, I'm I'm looking to do it tomorrow, that was my.
Telling you the proximity of Wells Fargo. Anything else?
I'm just glad that we're getting down to business on this and investing money properly, uh, I remember three or four years ago, Mitch. He brought this up at board meeting and actually the finance committee meeting, and it just kind of like, you know, over the top of everybody's head and over the beginning.
Yep.
So now at least we're investing, possibly making some money.
Well, you know, I'm not gonna quote, I'm not gonna to to put anybody on the spot, but uh. The investment in the 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 firm estimated that we could realize about two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. In in revenue, where right now we're getting about a hundred to a hundred twenty five, so doubling our revenue. I'll be to pay for some of those projects that we have.
Okay, any agenda items for the next meeting? Agenda items.
Chairman Miller. I wanted, can you hear me?
Barely.
Barely, okay, uh, since this, this graph was posted a couple weeks ago, this yield curve. Uh, the high end is over four and in the very left, a couple of basis points higher, so this yield curve is flattening a little bit, so. The yield would be a little bit more should they start investing now than this curve shows, so it's a, it's encouraging that way longer term. It's getting better.
Just to to address that, they are doing a uh an analysis of our of our funds. Versus uh what what funds they anticipate as investing in, and they're gonna bring that to a board. Bring it to a finance committee meeting and a board meeting so that everybody is aware of of where our investments are going to be going. Right.
Martha, you have anything?
Nothing, um, I just wanted to say thanks so much, this is great, this investment. And that was shifting over the investments and also um for all the grant activity you're doing, that's that's terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Andy?
He's new. Can you hear you?
You're you're on mute.
I'll unmute to say I have nothing to say, thank you very much. Appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing, the reports get clearer and clearer, and I'll echo that this uh. The steps in this investment to realize easy, easy returns that we're not getting today is just a great step forward, so thank you.
Great. Um. Next meeting.
Your next meeting will be, um, the, it's the same date as today, if we're March twenty thirty. Yes, it is. Why is it the thirtieth? Would you like to read the last Thursday or the? God, okay, it's the it's the committee's uh discretion.
So let's just leave it at the last Thursday.
Okay. Okay, the thirtieth then.
Yep.
The thirtieth, that's set in stone, I mean, the last Thursday, okay.
It's set in concrete, but it's curing, okay? So the next meeting will be on the thirtieth of March.
The thirtieth, not the twenty third.
Correct. Okay, last Thursday of the month, unless otherwise advised.
And uh, I I would anticipate having uh C I P budget and preliminary budget. Uh, to be reviewed by the finance committee, that is, I I am, I'm eyeballs deep in in numbers right now.
Great. Do I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Chairman Miller?
A motion?
Chairman Miller, I just wanted.
Oh, what, sorry.
Well, that's okay, I apologize, I just I just asked um. Mister Snyder to toot his own horn earlier, because he went through a lot of effort. Above and beyond, I mean, he did a, and he also brought in Supervisor Parlin to help him. Uh, leverage his uh ability to get that grant, so I just wanted to. Say that he didn't mention that, but I just wanted everyone to know a second what Andy said about all the effort and progress we've made, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Do I have a second for the motion to adjourn?
My second, Martha.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
But meeting's adjourned, if you don't hear from me, it's because I'll be stuck in the snow until the thirtieth of March.
It's nice out there now.
I was counting on that.
Well, it's, it's so just over a week, so.
Yeah, there'll be more, good, as long as the roads not covered, I'm good.
If I overnight it'll it'll get a.